Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, May the fourteenth, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone that's here in our council chambers, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Welcome also to our audience watching on cable channel twenty-two. Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Member Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Member Jackson, I'm sorry.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach. Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum present.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please join me, everyone, and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where its stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
We are now at proclamations.
We have four proclamations this evening. The first will recognize National Public Works Week. And I would invite Director Rick Powers, who's our Director of Public Works, to the podium. I think he's got a team with him. I'll read the proclamation, then you can introduce everybody.
I hope I got everybody's name.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Peoria. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. They are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, solid waste systems, public buildings, roads, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas it is in the public interest to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas 2024 marks the sixty-fourth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. And now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby designate the week of May nineteenth through May twenty-five as National Public Works Week in Peoria, Illinois.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. It's great to be back. Actually, I'm feeling good for a lot of reasons. But just to... It's not often I get to come down here with the lightning. And you've heard me say thunder is nothing without lightning. There's a lightning right there. And if I could, I'd just like to mention a few of them. I hope I have everybody's name that showed up. If there's somebody that didn't, please tap me on the head or something. No particular order, except one guy I know you know, Cy Maroon, our Deputy Director of Operations. Been here a long time and knows you well. Our Deputy Director of Engineering, Andrea Klaufenstein, is probably still home recovering from the longest Uber ride that I ever saw, anyway, as a result of missing a... Yeah, it was a long trip. Been a very long Uber trip. So... But she is not with us, but we do have a few others with us here. So Chris Cummings is here, who's a maintenance worker. Sidney Maroon. That's right. Who is an engineering technician. KJ Matthews, our Administration Manager. Pal Mendez, our Assistant City Engineer. Andy O'Neil, our Lead Electrician. Gary Turner, our Program Supervisor and Operations. Nick McMillan, our Communication Specialist. A lot of you know him, and he's also our PIO. Jim Mankel, some of you have seen his name. I know Jim is now... You know, we had a hard time, a long time, filling our engineering technician area, which is kind of who polices our streets relative to construction activity on the right-of-way. Jim is that right-of-way manager. So you've seen me passing emails to him. That is Jim Mankel. Raise your hand, Jim. Good job. Don't want to annoy you. And Corey Mack, also a maintenance worker. Now, did I miss anyone? All right, thanks. So with that, again, it's just... We had kind of put out a public invite to come here. Now, I want to do one to you. So, Madam Clerk... Sorry, Trina, sorry. Didn't know she wasn't there. This Thursday is... May sixteenth is Public Works Open House from four to seven PM. So to avoid having a quorum, if you could put out one of those notices, because I want all of the council to show up from four to seven. Madam Mayor, please just come and see what we're doing. We're remodeling, so don't, you know, pardon our dust, I will say, but it's very exciting. You'll get to see the pilot for native plantings. We have a lot going on there. You'll also see how crowded it is, parking and why we need more space. But we have a lot going on, and it's long overdue. But it is happening, and it's happening at a pretty good clip. So again, that's this Thursday from four to seven PM. Consider this your invite unless you want me to send you one. And I can do that, too, if you would like. I will do that.
You've had a lot of new projects going on, and I don't know how you manage them all, but you've got a great team.
Indeed, we do. It's... I was going to just say, basically, I actually had written down a few things to say. And every... I don't know if you have noticed the theme. It's not a theme so much. Every year, APWA changes the theme. And this year, it's advancing quality of life. That's their theme. But in every one of their announcements that they make, they always say, "We're doing this quietly." Have you noticed that? And if you go online, I mean, you'll go to last year, go to the year before, go to the year before. We just quietly do all that we do. And I have to say, since I've been here, and I know some of you have even seen that in me, I'm not a person that comes in here and pounds on the table and does those things. I pretty much say, "Here's the data. Take a look at it." "Mr. Manager, what's your desire? Madam Mayor, what's your desire?" And away we go, and we try to get it done. But I wrote down a few things. I said it last year. You probably drove by it. You stopped at it. You walked on it. You looked at it. It drained off the street. It grew. We mowed it. We painted it. It was repaired. Or it was being built. And on the being-built side, to the mayor's point, on the capital side, I think we're going to have one year approaching seventy... Help me, Mr. Manager, two or seventy-three million in capital expenditures, which, if you put... To put that in perspective from Public Works, the people behind me, the operations, if you will, of our entire department operations budget is about twenty million. So not only are we doing what we're doing operationally with some... I won't quite... Yeah, I'll use... I'll go marine on them. They're few and proud. They're awesome. They're good people, and I'm proud to serve with them. But we also are instrumental to the economy. Seventy-two million dollars, to the point of, Mayor, as you said, I don't know how we're moving that much construction into the economy, but that's where those dollars are going. It's actually outside of our department, and there are people charged with those duties that is actually three times, four... Well, three and a half times our operational budget is what we're moving into the economy. So again, just unbelievable work. I'm unbelievably proud of who these people are. I'm honored to serve with them. They're unbelievably supportive. And again, I couldn't ask for a better team. I want to thank them for being here, and thank you for honoring them. Thank you.
Half of the council, we thank you for your great work. Thank you very much. Our next proclamation recognizes Building Safety Month, and we have Director Joe Doolin, who's our Director of Community Development. Do you have an entourage as well?
A small one.
Okay.
Not as big.
Okay. Whereas the city of Peoria Building Safety Division of the Community Development Department recognizes the strength of our community depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure in Peoria. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, code enforcement inspectors, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas safety in the built environment is an essential component of maintaining public health, and building safety plays a major role in not only protecting our community members, but also protecting the property values in our city and reducing blight throughout our community. Whereas Mission Possible... I like that. The theme for Building Safety Month 2024 promotes appropriate steps that everyone can take at the personal, local, and global levels to ensure the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and to recognize that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month in Peoria.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As the mayor said, May is Building Safety Month. It's an opportunity for us to remind the public about the value of our building inspectors and our code inspectors. Often, council sometimes gets calls and concerns from builders, developers, contractors when there's questions about codes. But I want to assure you that our staff goes out there every day with the mindset of trying to keep our community safe. And sometimes they have to tell people... Interpretation of codes that sometimes costs a little more. But at the end of the day, it's about keeping the building safe. So when the public goes into a building, they know that the exits are there, the fire sprinklers are there. It's a safe place for them to be. I get to witness their hard work every day of the passion they have for the public safety and keeping our community safe every day. So with me tonight, Building Safety Manager Rich Storm, Building Inspector Isaac Garcia, and Building Inspector Matt Ziller. Not with us, Building Inspector Craig Reed, and then all of our code inspectors. And then a special thanks to the Fire Chief in the Fire Department, specifically Charlie Perrin, for all the work they do. It's quite the team that goes out. And, you know, sometimes you hear that pushback about codes and regulations and business unfriendliness. But I do want to remind you, every year, we issue two or three thousand building permits every year from all the trades, HVAC, electrical, plumbing. And when you think of the small percentage who might not be incredibly happy with having to go above and beyond the code or do anything like that, it's such a small percentage, and you often don't hear about all the work they do every day and do a good job. And we often get really positive feedback. It's just not quite as public it is. But the number-one priority they have is public safety, and that's how they approach their job to make sure that happens in Peoria. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for all you do, gentlemen. Our next proclamation recognizes Enhanced EMS. Is Mr. Rand here? If not, we have Chief Solenberger... Saul Berger, sorry, chief. Thank you. Whereas for more than forty years, paramedic teams at Advanced Medical Transport of Central Illinois, AMT, have worked diligently to serve the community members of Peoria with compassionate, life-saving care. Working together with rescue teams from the city of Peoria Fire Department, AMT's integrated care model responded to more than twenty-two thousand emergency medical calls in 2023. And whereas AMT is passionate about expanding the community's ability to provide CPR in the event of a cardiac emergency. Since 2001, AMT's Cardio Reviver Program has provided free CPR training to over seventy-two thousand community members and donated over one thousand automated external defibrillators, AEDs. AMT and the Peoria Fire Department believe trained citizens are truly first responders in a cardiac emergency. And whereas the city of Peoria Race to the Top is a working clinical protocol designed by AMT to improve the survival of cardiac arrest victims. In the city of Peoria, ambulance and rescue crews successfully resuscitate cardiac arrest victims at three times the national average. Wow. AMT meets with the Peoria Fire Department weekly to review their efforts and foster a spirit of teamwork and respect. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby acknowledge May twentieth through May twenty-five as Emergency Medical Services Week in Peoria.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, distinguished council, thank you. This consideration was brought forward by Andrew Rand with Advanced Medical Transport, so I'm in his stead. What I will say is that we work with AMT every single day, going on dozens of EMS calls. And the calls that are described in this proclamation are the ones that are the most critical. And how we address those on a daily basis is with the education and training, whether that's within the community, with our sidewalk CPR, our EMT basics, our paramedics, working within the system, working with the hospitals. So we're very proud of our firefighters at the Peoria Fire Department. So I can't speak too much about Advanced Medical Transport other than the standpoint that we work with them dozens of times a day, every single day, trying to provide the best level of care to the city of Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, chief. Our last proclamation recognizes Poppy Days, and I see almost everybody has their red poppy pinned on. I'm going to ask our guests from the American Legion Post to come forth. Gary Hall, Jim Ulrich, and Phil Burnett. And Councilman Chuck Grab will share the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I think it's important to make an announcement about our upcoming Memorial Day program as the council will not meet again until the day after Memorial Day. So time is flying. And that Memorial Day program will be held at the Peoria Riverfront Gateway Building, 200 Northeast Water Street, Monday, May twenty-seven, 2024 Memorial Day. And the musical prelude, thanks to our Peoria Municipal Band, will commence at ten thirty AM. Those of you who attended last year know what a treat it is to have this band play in our great all-America city. The program itself will begin around eleven o'clock, and we hope to have everybody out by about twelve o'clock, twelve fifteen, because there are many other events going on in our community on that very important day, the one day we set aside to honor our war dead. So one day. So I hope to see the public there. Quite a few members of the general public were there last year. This year, we're going to have water, especially if it's hot and sticky. And we're going to have, as honored guests, the Peoria City Council members who can attend, and they did a lot to make it a great success last year. So with that said, the proclamation for Poppy Days. Whereas Poppy Days are a time to honor those who have fallen while also representing a sign of hope and a renewal for the living. The poppy flower is worn as a symbol to honor the dead while also representing a sign of hope and renewal for the living. All the poppy flowers that are distributed among communities are assembled with pride by America's righteous, disabled veterans. And whereas from the battlefields of World War I, weary soldiers brought home the memory of a barren landscape transformed by wild poppies, red as the blood that had soaked the soil. By that miracle of nature, the spirit of their lost comrades lived on. The poppy became then a symbol of the sacrifice of lives in war and represented the hope that none had died in vain. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy has continued to bloom for the casualties of all wars, its petals of paper bound together for veterans by veterans, reminding this country each year that the men and women who have served and died for their country deserve to be remembered. Whereas identifying the poppy as a memorial flower can be attributed to Muina Michael when in 1918 she was so moved by the poem in Flanders Fields that she wrote this response, quote, "That blood of heroes never dies, but lends a luster for the red of the flower that blooms above the dead in Flanders Fields," end of quote. Whereas she purchased a bouquet of poppies and asked her colleagues to wear them as a tribute to the fallen. Later, she advocated for the adoption of the poppy as the national symbol of sacrifice. And whereas the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary unite in their efforts to keep the memory alive of those who perished while serving, in addition to honoring those who served, with all donations going to the Illinois Veterans Homes in Mendino, Danville, Quincy, LaSalle, and Gifts to the Yanks, now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge May sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen as Poppy Days.
Gentlemen?
Well, hmm. All I can do is say thank you on behalf of the American Legion Post Number Two. Special thanks to Chuck Grab, who last year, at the last minute, took on the Memorial Day event. And this year, it's going to be even better, and the next year will be even better, right, Chuck? Because Stacy Peterson will not let it happen.
That's right.
I was going to say a few things, but Chuck's speech kind of took it all out of me. And I'm sure everybody would be glad to know that Gary Hall has nothing else to say.
Seeing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilman Grab, I do want to thank you for your leadership role in the Memorial Day event and representing the council in that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our proclamations. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held April twenty-third, 2024, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the town portion of the agenda. We have three town items. Item number twenty-four dash one twenty-eight, a communication with the request to set a special meeting of the township electors for June eleventh, 2024, at six PM at City Hall, Council Chambers, and to approve the attached agenda for a special meeting of the township electors.
Trustee Grab?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the special meeting, which will occur involving the township electors on June eleventh, 2024, at six o'clock PM at City Hall, Council Chambers, and to approve the attached agenda for that special meeting of the township electors. This meeting will be followed by the town board meeting and the city council meeting. And it's clearly outlined the reason for this special meeting. And I think we're all enthusiastic to see some programming going forward that we've been hoping for, for some time, to help make our community better.
Thank you.
So I'd move for approval.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Riegenbach. Any discussion or questions? Excuse me, trustee Riegenbach. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item number twenty-four dash one twenty-nine, a request to approve a resolution certifying the submission of an advisory question of the public policy to electors at the November fifth, 2024, general election, approved by the town electors at the April ninth, 2024, annual town meeting.
Trustee Grab?
Now, this is the ranked choice voting issue which passed at our last town elector meetings. So I move that we approve the resolution certifying the submission of an advisory question of public policy that relates to that to the electors at the November fifth, 2024, general election, approved by the town electors at our April ninth, 2024, annual town meeting.
Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Jackson. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item number twenty-four dash one three zero, a request to approve the April 2024 actual expenditures and to approve the May 2024 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Trustee Grab?
Move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by trustee Gordon Young. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at consent agenda items. Item number twenty-four dash one three one, a communication with the request to approve the funding recommendations from the CDBG Public Service Commission for the 2024 Nonprofit Capital Program. Item number twenty-four, one three two, a communication with the request to approve existing liability insurance coverages, cyber liability coverage, crime coverage and service fee with the city's existing broker of record, Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, in the amount not to exceed eight hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Item number twenty-four, one three three, a communication with the request to approve a professional services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services in an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand for the native planting Orange Prairie Detention Basin restoration. Item number twenty-four, one three four, a communication with the request to approve the First Amendment to Master Services Agreement with Prairie Engineers authorizing an extension not to exceed the amount of four hundred thousand dollars to continue engineering services throughout the city of Peoria. Item number twenty-four, one three five, a communication with the request for the following. A, approve a local agency agreement for the jurisdictional transfer of Sterling Avenue from US Route One Fifty- from US Route 150 to Scenic Drive from the county highway system to the municipal street system. And B, adopt an ordinance approving the transfer of a portion of Sterling Avenue from US Route 150 to Scenic Drive from the county highway system to the municipal street system. Item number 24-117, a communication with the request for the following. A, adopt an ordinance to approve the redevelopment plan and project for the proposed Distillery Tiff District. And B, adopt an ordinance to designate the redevelopment project area for the proposed Distillery Tiff District. And C, adopt an ordinance to approve tax increment allocation financing for the proposed Distillery Tiff District. Item number 24-118, a communication with the request for the following. A, adopt an ordinance to approve the redevelopment plan and the project for the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park Tiff District. And B, adopt an ordinance to designate the redevelopment project area for the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park Tiff District. And C, adopt an ordinance to approve the tax increment allocation financing for the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park Tiff District. Item number 24-136, a communication with the request to approve and authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria and the Board of Education of Peoria Public School District 150 regarding the Distillery Tiff District. Item number 24-137, a communication with the request to approve and authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria and the Board of Education of Peoria Heights Community Unit School District Number 325 regarding, regarding the Galena Road Industrial Park Tiff District. Item number 24-138, a reappointment to the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees with a request to concur of Norman Burdick. Item number 24-139, a reappointment to the Downtown Development Corporation with the request to concur Representative Ryan Spain and Zachary Euler. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Kelly?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 24-132, please.
Thank you. Any other items to remove from consent? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item number 24-132, a communication with the request to approve existing liability insurance coverages, cyber liability coverage, crime, crime coverage and service fee with the city existing broker of record, Arthur J. Gallagher, Risk Management Services, in an amount not to exceed $809,370.
Councilmember Kelly?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question for our manager. I am a little embarrassed to say I didn't check the budget, but these premiums, for good reason, are all significantly higher than what we've had before. Was this anticipated in the budget?
Uh, I'd actually like to have our Assistant HR Director, Ed Hopkins, come forward and talk to you about this, but we did anticipate this in the budget, but I'll let him go ahead and talk about that.
Good evening. I believe the Finance Director put an additional 20% increase into the budget for this year. And, and if all goes well, we'll, we're on track for that this year, I think.
So, so the good news is it was in the budget. The bad news is it was a 20% increase that we had planned in the budget, and it's lived up to be at that level.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
And I will move for approval.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are now at first readings. Item number 24-013, a communication with the request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance establishing the West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn it over to our Corporation Counsel to explain this one.
As counsel might recall, we've had two public hearings on this matter because the first one had a flaw in the legal description, so the publication was defective. We need to reinvigorate the process from the beginning and go through it. So there's been some delay, but the project has not been delayed. Uh, this will result in an overlay curb and gutter with partial contribution by the residents that they voted to approve by a majority vote of the residents on the block. There's 14 residents. Uh, they'll pay an additional amount on their property, through their property tax bills by the special assessment process for 10 years and satisfy their portion. And the city will fund the balance through the stormwater utility because of the curb and gutter work. So that, I don't know if there are any questions, but I appreciate your patience with the flaw in the legal description. But in any regard, we've received no objections, and so we'll anticipate this being presented for your consideration at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hayes. Uh, Council, Councilmember Grab?
Yes, um, Mayor Ali, I would move to approve the first reading of the ordinance establishing what's going to be a beautiful West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area.
I'm sorry, we'll need a, a motion to receive and file for this item.
Yeah, isn't that what you're doing? The motion to receive and file?
Yes, receive and file. Uh, receive and file the first reading of that ordinance.
Okay. Uh, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are now at regular business items. Item number 24-140, a communication with the request to approve the sole, the sole source purchase of one used vehicle from a Peoria-based auto group for an amount not to exceed $30,000, and this requires a two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting, less than six votes.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a, a vehicle purchase that we have for the Police Department for the Special Investigations Division. Uh, since this is a sole source, it requires the two-thirds vote.
Okay. Any questions or? Councilmember Seer?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I believe the Councilman Euler made a motion. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Councilman Euler moved to approve, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item number 24-141, a communication with the request to approve the distribution of funds to purchase cameras and other electronic equipment for five camera trailers with DCEO grant funds in the amount of $82,500, and this also requires two-thirds vote of the councilmembers voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to let the Police Chief explain this item for you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Um, I think it was last year you approved the purchase of the trailers. As we think back, um, we have what's the armadillos that have been used here in Peoria for numerous years are the, the old armored vehicles that we park in the areas. Those have become very deteriorated. The garage can't maintain them. We couldn't move them. They wouldn't turn on. So when we had the funds to, to look at how we re-implement or redesign something, we decided to go with the box trailers. You should have received an email with the images and the description of those. Um, so they, trailers have been purchased. They've been wrapped with the design that they, that we wanted so they could be visual in the neighborhood. For the price of, we would have got two used Brinkstrucks. We were able to purchase six trailers and get them fully outfitted with what we need. Um, we've outfitted one, and, and I'll give credit to our IT department and Lieutenant Esser and Captain Briggs who have taken the lead on that part of it and been able to outfit one trailer, put it out there, see how it works. And now we want to outfit the rest of the trailers with the cameras and the solar panels and the generators just inside of them and the remote access. That Lieutenant Esser, quite frankly, has more information on the components of it. But we need to outfit the rest of the trailers with the camera system so we can go ahead and deploy those where we need them. And it gives us six versus two.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a, a quick question, Chief. Did you say there, there is currently one out there, right?
Yes, no one.
One. Have you all had an opportunity to determine its effectiveness? Uh, is it, is it the one, it kind of moves around, doesn't it, to different?
So you've seen one that's out in the area of Griswold. There's the trailer, that's just a trailer, a white trailer, two wheels. So this is the box trailer with the wrap that says, uh, video of the patch of the police, high visibility. Yes, we've used it, we put it out, we've been testing it, it works great. We brought it back, make sure we provide the maintenance needs, and I believe it's redeployed right now somewhere else. Okay, it's at the station currently.
Okay, is the plan to use the, all of them? Or does it depend upon what?
The plan is, we had two armadillos, what you formerly known as the Armadillos. And the amount of requests we would get for them, we didn't have enough of them. So now we'll have, instead of having two, we will have six trailers that we could deploy at six different locations on top of the other smaller trailers that we already have.
Okay. And I guess I should have rephrased that question. You say deploy. Is the plan to just use them sporadically as need or crime arises?
So we get a lot of requests from neighborhood groups, from yourselves on the council, where there may be an issue in the neighborhood and we need to have a visual deterrent. This gives us an opportunity to have more. In the past, we would, we'd be able to put one somewhere or two of them somewhere, and we had to move them a week. Now we have six that we can redeploy in different, at six locations at the same time, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, you may, um, not be able to speak to this in great detail. Um, so I will lean in if, if I need to. Uh, but is this the trailer that was at the event? Um, at, uh, what was it, Boys and Girls Club? There was a trailer that was there.
With the patches on it?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was phenomenal. One of the concerns that I've always had with the armadillos, yes, I understand they served a purpose, but they were really pretty, I don't know, like, in obstruction. It was for area residents. It was, it was a deterrent, but at the same time, um, the thing, it was so big that sometimes you couldn't identify where the problem house was. Um, and, and, and so although I do believe that they served their purpose at that time, um, I, to me, this is a better option. And the money goes further for various locations versus having too limited. But can you speak to, for the citizens who are not familiar with the trailers at all, like, in layman's terms, like what that means if they see one in their area?
You want to jump in? Go ahead. He could, he could talk about the technical aspects of it.
Well, thanks for having me. Um, yeah, if a community sees a trailer in their neighborhood, it just means somebody has requested for that trailer to be there or we've identified a problem. Um, basically, they're here to try to improve the quality of life for the citizens in that area um, and deter loitering or a party house, loud music, people walking through yards, anything that we, that maybe video surveillance would deter, that's what these are for. And they're completely solar powered, so we can, they can be out there for as long as we need. Um, but without solar, they would be out there for about two to three days and before we would have to move them again and charge them up. So it just depends how we park them and how long the problem is there would determine how long it would be parked there. Usually, they're not there for more than a week, probably, the armadillos would.
Okay, and, and the goal is to capture the activity in the area, correct?
Well, I think the primary goal would be to deter any kind of,
Okay.
you know, city ordinances or, or crimes in that area. Um, and if they do occur, we would capture it on video.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I think, yeah, we definitely have a motion by Councilman Allen and a, a motion by Councilman Euler and a second by Councilman Allen. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a item of clarification. Um, once you bring the trailers back to, uh, the police station, do you have means there to charge them up?
Yes.
Without, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I thought so, but thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Uh, let's cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item number 24-142, a communication with the request for the following. A, accept a small equipment grant from the Office of the State Fire Marshal in the amount of 22, $23,430. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2024-2025 biannual budget related to the general fund to recognize the receipt of a grant for small equipment from the Office of the State Fire Marshal for $23,430. And this also requires a two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn it over to our fire chief to explain this one.
Good evening. Um, pretty straightforward. State of Illinois every year has a small equipments grant that they make available through the State Fire Marshal's office. We had the ability, the last fall of 2023, to apply, and this would be the acceptance of that award. With this money, we'll be able to buy more protective equipment for the firefighters.
I think these are separate motions as well. Can I get a motion, please? Moved by Councilmember Allen. This is on item A to approve. Can I get a second? Moved, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Item A, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Allen?
Uh, I move to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
Item number 24-143, a communication with the request for the following. A, approve the, approve an amendment to the Landfill II Agreement with Waste Management Incorporated, pending review and approval by the State's Attorney's Office. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2024-2025 biannual budget related to the Solid Waste Fund for additional work from FOTH for multiple added services in the amount of $100,000, and this also requires two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have two items that we're actually going to request a deferral on. Uh, but I'd like to just, if I could, walk through a couple of the reasons why we're asking for the deferral. On Friday, April 12th of 2024, the State's Attorney, uh, in their role as the legal counsel to the City County Landfill Committee, served notice to GFL that we felt that they were in breach of their Landfill III Agreement that the parties had approved over a decade prior. Um, and from that, we had asked for a number of items that went through the Landfill Committee to be approved and then came to you here at the City Council as well, to the County Board. The first is the item to approve an amendment to the Landfill II Agreement with Waste Management, um, which would basically hold them harmless from the minimum guaranteed payment that they would need. hold them harmless from the minimum guaranteed payment that they would need to make next year if we're continuing to accept waste in 2025. Second was to adopt an ordinance amending the city's budget relating to the solid waste fund for additional work from FOTH to look at what we might do if we were to go out and to start the process of creating our own landfill on our own without the assistance of GFL and without the contract that we have. So on May 8th, we met with GFL Environmental CEO Patrick Dovigie as well as his area vice president, his regional vice president, and their legal counsel. We had our legal counsel and myself, yes, there were three Patricks in the meeting at that meeting. And we also had landfill committee chairman Stephen Morris was in the meeting as well as Scott Sorrell of the county and Janie Cordes Boswell from the State's Attorney's Office. It was a very positive and productive meeting that we had with GFL where the CEO made it very clear to us that they intend to honor their contracts that they have with the city and the county and the landfill committee with regards to all of the financial benefits that are included in the contract. When we executed that contract almost a dozen years ago, there were a number of financial inducements that were put in place by PDC that made it really worth the city and county and the committees' while to execute that agreement. So while we still have to work out the details, it was a good first meeting where they did say that they would honor the gate rate. For us, that's really important and important for the City of Peoria and the residents of Peoria, that we get to see a reduction in what we're currently paying to Waste Management, which is over $90 a ton, that we see that that number drops down to under $57 a ton, which is what the agreement calls for with GFL. So once the landfill is completely full, it will be GFL's responsibility to take our waste at a much reduced rate. And that's a significant savings to the residents of the City of Peoria. So that's important that we do that. There are host fees that would be paid to both the city, the county, and the landfill committee, that there would be post-closure care taken up by GFL for landfill number one, that there would be a $250,000 payment in the creation of a perpetual care fund for landfill number one, once that was, actually for all three of our landfills at that site, that they would start the work on creating a citizens' convenience center to accept household hazardous waste. So I think it was very positive from that meeting that those financial benefits that we negotiated years ago, the company said that they would honor. They did say that their preference would be that we would look at constructing landfill three once Indian Creek was full. That's something that we'd like to discuss a little bit further with them and come back to you with some suggestions on that. And then ultimately, obviously, we sent them notice as well about our hauling contract, and we'd want to wrap this up before we have discussions with them about the hauling contract. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have, but we would ask for a 30-day deferral on these two items.
Thirty days, okay. Okay. Questions for the manager? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, first of all, kudos to you and to our Corporation Council, et cetera, for getting GFL to the table, and I'm very happy that they were cooperative. I'm sure we all are. How far behind are we at the moment versus where we thought we ought to be?
Well, we are, if Waste Management continues to deposit the waste into the landfill at the rate that they're going at, it will be full by the end of the year. The process to be ready with a new landfill, we're probably two to three years out from there. So there's going to be a period of time where GFL is going to have to either, you know, go through the process to get a transfer station established and then ship the waste to Indian Creek until the landfill is ready to go, or we would have to then look at having the discussion with them about saying, fill up Indian Creek first, and then we'll start the process of construction of our landfill. The advantage of that, obviously, is it provides some waste certainty for a longer period of time for the community. And if we're receiving the financial benefits, I think there's some upside to that as well.
Indian Creek is landfill number one?
No, Indian Creek is a landfill that is owned by GFL in Tazewell County.
Okay. There was, in the communications, et cetera, there was some talk about, as an interim step, also reopening landfill one. Is that?
Exploring that as an option, looking at that as an option. And I think that was prior to the meeting that we had with GFL, and if we're moving down this path, that may not be necessary. But we want you, we're asking you to defer this item just in case we need to come back if the negotiations don't prove to be fruitful.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And Madam Mayor, I will move to defer.
Is there a second? Seconded by?
Defer, I guess, number A.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Further discussion? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, there's a couple of us that were around when that original contract was actually voted on with PDC. And Les Bergstein, rest his soul, used to always call himself the king of trash, and this might sound like trash talk. I'm seeing how many little cliches I can get in here, but seriously, this is a huge step. This has been something that Councilman Euler and I have been the council representatives on the landfill committee for a couple of years now together. And to have the tipping fees go from that $90 range down into the 50s, that alone is something that we can all be very excited about. And, you know, of course, there's still a lot of talk to go through, and the attorneys have to put the final touch on it. But this isn't something that you talk about a lot of times, the landfill, the hauling contracts, those are things that sometimes get lost in the minutia. But this has been a real burden for that landfill committee, and this is a huge step forward. So I just want to recognize the work of all those involved up to this point. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm encouraged by what I'm hearing. I don't think it's ironic that at the 11th hour, though, they're coming to the table. And I am concerned that this could be just another stalling tactic. So I will vote to, you know, defer this another month, but I don't think we should. I mean, if we come back another month and we keep kicking this can down the road, you know, the clock is ticking on this. So I'd like to proceed in due haste. I'm sure everyone's mindful of that, but I just want to put it on the record. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We're voting on deferral for item A. Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Kelly?
I move to defer item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Any discussion? Please cash your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item number 24 dash 144, a communication with a request for the following: A, accept a grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for Public Safety and Economic Development in the amount of $250,000 and B, approve a grant to the Southside Community United for Change for the annual litter cleanup program in the amount of $50,000.
Mr. Manager?
This is another grant that we've received. We've had several grants that we've been able to receive this evening. This is $250,000 for youth development and workforce development. $200,000 of that will go towards the Mayor's Youth Program and the internship program that we have, and then $50,000 for SCUC for their litter program and youth program that they have in place that they had a great number of attendees at, and the Mayor's Program does as well. Director Craddy is here if there's any questions about the finances or accounting of it. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. But again, more money, it's good news.
Yes, thank you. I want to express thanks and appreciation to Senator Dave Kaler for bringing this money home. Any, oh, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would just like to echo your sentiment with regards to our thanks to Senator Kaler for being able to assist us in both worthwhile youth job endeavors. I will be abstaining from this, but with that said, I'll abstain.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other questions? Please cash your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention. Jackson? Thank you. Thank you. What was that? Oh, that was for A. Okay. That was for A. And who made that first motion? Okay. Councilmember Allen?
I move to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cash your ballots. Passes with one abstention. Jackson? Thank you. Clerk?
Item number 24 dash 145, a communication with a request to receive and file. The month ended March 31st, 2024, unaudited financial report.
Director Craddy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In front of you tonight is the March 31st month-end financial report. Just a few of the highlights. Revenues overall are down about 1.5%. We're seeing a little bit of softness specifically in personal property replacement tax. The Illinois Municipal League has put out some recent guidance that those numbers actually should tick back up closer to our budget. They haven't done so, obviously, in the first few months of the year, but we anticipate that happening. And I think just for context with this, through the month of March, this only accounts for about 9% of our revenues collected. March is really when we start seeing our sales tax, income tax receipts, PPRT-type receipts come in. So we'll get a better indication over the next few months really where our revenues are looking for the year. On the expense side, we're up about 8% compared to budget. While that number can look alarming on face value, where this is primarily at is due to some accelerated spending of our ARPA funds. Just as a reminder that those ARPA funds have to be obligated by the end of this year and spent by 2026. So as we've been more into the program, we're just spending those at a little bit faster pace this year than we have in the last few years. And with that, those are really the main highlights, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that council has.
Thank you, Director Craddy. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of days ago, I attended a virtual meeting. It was informational Zoom that was sent out by Madam Supervisor Lutrina Leary, and it was on property replacement tax, but through the township purview. And it was very informative, and so I'm still trying to learn this property replacement tax one-on-one. But on that particular Zoom, it talked about how the townships are expected to receive decreased amounts of property replacement taxes than they have in years past, and to ensure that we're preparing for that. Looking at our current projection, obviously, our year-to-date, but do you forecast us mirroring what 2023 and 2022 looks like when we get to the end of the year, sir?
No. So what we are anticipating, and we include it in our budget, is about a 35% reduction year-over-year. Part of that is clawbacks that are occurring at the state level right now and overpayments that occurred in '21 through '23 to the units of local government. In kind of reviewing it, I think we should expect to see clawbacks at least probably through 2026-ish timeframe as they kind of go back through their review of what the formula looks like. So we are anticipating that as in our budget as well as the projections that were presented to council during the budget process.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director, just a few questions tonight. Tell us a little bit about the PPRT again. I mean, I know the numbers are way down. How does it affect our pension payment? And I know you put money aside every month, so can you explain that again to us so it's really clear for all of us, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of how we fund our police and fire pension plans, as well as all of our pension plans, we fund those primarily through property taxes. We do also include a portion of personal property replacement tax, and then any remaining amount compared to what our required contribution is comes out of the general fund. So as we start to see that general fund, or we start to see that personal property replacement tax number drop, that means we either have to come from a property tax standpoint or we have to look at it from a general fund standpoint. What we have been doing in practicality is looking at that coming from the general fund. So to your point, as we see those numbers decline, the expectation of filling that gap out of just general fund dollars is going to increase over through 2039.
Next question has to do with interest on our money. I mean, I remember last year, I think we did not have that item in our budget of the revenue. I think we, interest was like $7 million, I believe, on the $180 million that we have in the bank invested right now, correct? How much, where are your calculation for this year?
I had anticipated some reduced cash on hand just with how much we had budgeted for capital, that we would see our numbers decline. So I budgeted about $4 million. Rates haven't moved tremendously. Rates are still anticipated to move, so I think we'll probably still end up close to that number, but it could be closer to five.
Explain to us again, Director, about the Civic Center, the Convention Center bond that we issued many years ago that's come into in '27, I believe. Can you talk to us about that specifically? I'm looking for the savings, how much we're paying now and how much, you know, we have a $20 million loan to the Civic Center right now that we only pay interest on, but what will be the payment? And just explain that to all of us again, please.
Yeah. So the cascade of funds associated with the hotel, restaurant, amusement tax. The city currently, last year, collected around $11 million in HRA taxes. About $7 million of that last year and at least through 2028 goes towards retiring the debt that the Civic Center had that was issued back in 2008. Once that payment is, once those large payments are done, we landed about $1.8 million in terms of where their debt payment will be for the next 20 years. So really, what you're looking at is there's some opportunity and some savings around 2029 that there will be about $5 million in savings in their existing debt structure.
Thank you very much for the explanation. I don't know how many of us will be here then, but obviously, I'm getting a fair amount of phone calls, and I'm sure all my colleagues and the mayor are doing the same thing about Governor Pritzker stopping that one penny, I believe, tax on the-
Grocery tax.
On grocery tax. That's going to cost our city $4 million. So I'd like to ask for a report back, and I'm sure city managers are working on that too. But to me, that's just two ideas right now that you described to us. Now, we're going to have a $5.5 million saving in 2028, '29, and we have a $4 million also example you just talked to us about. So I know that you'll probably, and the city manager will, would come back with four or five ideas how to, for lack of terminology, how to plug that hole and the $4 million hole that we'll have in our budget next year. So I'd love to say, report back with four or five different ideas where the money will come from, hopefully without raising any taxes for our constituents. The last question is really for, about the budget for Mr. Urick. Our one, our probably our largest, our second-largest account balance beside the general fund is the Stormwater Utility Fund. I'm getting questions all the time. I had a presentation last week to a group of people, and they were asking me about the progress on Stormwater. I mean, it's our largest account. I mean, I'd like to understand, try to understand, why we're sitting on this large amount of money. Are we doing, are we short on employees? Or just try to explain to us why this account's so large.
Councilman, you approved in this budget nearly $20 million of drainage projects that are coming out of the Stormwater Utility Fund. So when you look at this number here, you need to take out that $20 million of expense and say, that's what we're doing. We're putting that to work in different drainage projects throughout the city. And that's what you can point to. So it's in the capital budget, but we'll be happy- So it's in the capital budget, but we'll be happy to give you some talking points that you can share with the public about all the different projects that we're working on this year as part of this budget. The Public Works Director talked about the record, you know, capital budget we have this year earlier this evening, and that's where a lot of this is going. It's going to roads, it's going to drainage projects, it's going to sidewalks. That's what we're putting those dollars into.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. I do want to comment on the grocery tax because we are working and have been working very closely with IML, Illinois Municipal League. They have been vehemently opposed to the reduction of the grocery tax, and they've been working with, you know, city leadership throughout the state of Illinois in terms of how we might respond to that in the event that the governor's proposal actually goes through. Nothing is final at this point. It's still a proposal that has a lot of weight to it, of course. It may actually happen. So in the event that it does happen, we also are working on a strategy with other municipalities on how there might be a unified response or approach to that. So keep you informed. Do we have a motion yet to receive and file? Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Receive and file the financial report. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Craddy.
We are now at unfinished business?
No unfinished business.
No, okay.
Oh, well, maybe. Councilmember Graham?
Yes, it's unfinished business. Corporation Counsel Hayes, could you please tell us where our representatives are in Springfield on the abridgement of our home rule powers as it relates to the action we can take to abate chronic malignant aggravated nuisance properties in our city?
So the bill that remains active had the deadline extended through the end of this week to be heard in the Senate Committee and on the floor of the Senate. There was discussion when we met with the local realtors that another amendment would be filed. That amendment has not been available yet through mid-afternoon today when I last checked. However, today, two additional sponsors were added to the bill, which now includes the Senate President and the Chair of the Assignments Committee, among others. And so there are some powerful sponsors of this legislation, even though the actual language hasn't been made public of what they intend to attempt to move. I would anticipate some furious action this week or next on this bill. And so I'm aware that the Illinois Municipal League is focused on this issue and has been in discussion with the Senate President's staff because that's the chamber that the bill really looks to be most active in. I'm watching it daily on a number of times a day to see what language might come out. When we met with the realtors, we suggested that the bill expands well beyond the protections of the Illinois Human Rights Act. Our own ordinance was modified by this council to become fully compliant with the Illinois Human Rights Act, and it is fully compliant with the Illinois Human Rights Act. For our residents, they should be assured, if you are a victim of crime and you call for police help, our ordinance will not affect your ability to continue renting your property. We are not seeking to evict victims of crime from their homes. What we are trying to do is use this tool where if a home becomes a harbor of crime, a drug house, or a house where other criminal activities are taking place on the behalf of the tenants, the occupants, or the guests, we're able to take action. I'll share with you that our ordinance has been used sparingly because it's such an excellent deterrent that all we have to do is just draw the landlord's attention to the ordinance, and they are active in correcting the measures and not always leading to the eviction of the tenants, but sometimes that's what it takes. And so we see this as a critical tool, a highly effective tool, a tool that's compliant in every way with the Illinois Human Rights Act, and it's a tool that I'm proud to defend on your behalf as a Corporation Counsel. And I think our members of our state delegation understand loud and clear our position on the matter, and will stand opposed to any legislation once it shows. Thank you.
Thank you, Corporation Counsel Hayes, for a very thorough report back to the council.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Reganbott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the council representative of the Housing Commission, I just have to be sure that you're all aware that this was also discussed at the monthly meeting a week ago, and the city's position wasn't quite understood appropriately. And in fact, there was growing sentiment that we should support this legislation because of the Human Rights Act angle on it. I tried to explain our perspective, but I think it's very important, Corporation Counsel, that we get some dialogue back to that commission because there's a very distinct misunderstanding. And unfortunately, one of the realtors who was at your meeting seemed to be telling a different story from what you just told. So I think it's critical that we get that back to the commission so that they see both sides of the story and particularly why we feel so strongly about this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I agree. Counsel?
If I may respond. Councilman, I apologize to you for not attending that because if I knew that was going to be an agenda item or that would be the nature of the conversation, I would have been happy to attend and to defend the city's position. I watched the tape of that because it was on Zoom. It was available for me to watch the videotape. And the commission member misapprehended and did not articulate our position as we articulated to her when she was in the prior meeting. And I would be happy to attend that commission meeting on its next meeting and any future meetings to clarify the city's position. I look forward to that opportunity. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
If there's no additional unfinished business, we're now at new business.
Is there any new business? Councilmember Reganbott?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I just want to publicly announce the Peoria Public Police Department in collaboration with Friendship Houses having a block party this coming Friday, and it will be at Morton Square Park from 4:00 to 7:00. The community is invited to that, and it's just another great outreach of our police department with members of our nonprofits that are working hand-in-glove with them.
Councilman, there's a name for that event, right?
The Safe Zones Block Parties.
Safe Zones.
Thank you. And I also want to thank Public Works for their continued efforts on Fulton Plaza. Continued plantings taking place. They really did a great job last year, and as somebody who walks through there frequently and likes to even enjoy lunch there, believe it or not, it's a, it looks beautiful already, and with all this rain, I'm sure it's even going to be better. So kudos to Public Works for keeping their eye on that for us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items. One, perhaps clarification on some of what transpired earlier in the meeting. I think it's important for the public to know that the building codes that the city of Peoria uses are the same building codes that all of our neighboring communities use. We don't have special, more punitive building codes than anyone else does. Ours are the same. There's a lot of talk out there about this. There can be differences in interpretation, I suppose, and perhaps in some other things, but the codes are the same. The other item is my, at this point, tri-weekly report on the rehab amendment in Springfield that has moved over now to the House. It passed the Senate. And Ryan Spain is the lead sponsor, but co-sponsoring are Jahan Gordon Young and Travis Weaver. So our delegation is promoting this. This came before the Revenue Committee of the House on Thursday. There were some fabulous presentations because I was there. No, I, but I did testify, as did Representative Ryan or Representative Spain. There were very good questions asked, very knowledgeable questions asked, and that committee unanimously approved it and forwarded it to the full House. That vote is supposed to hopefully take place this week.
That's great. Well, I hope it goes through. You've been working at this for a long time.
For a long time, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to take a moment to say congratulations to all of the graduates out there. It is graduation season, so whether you're fresh out of high school, graduating this week from a Peoria-area high school, or you're an adult learner who returned back to school, sometimes graduation, it isn't a sprint, it's a marathon, but all that matters is that you finished the race. So just want to give everyone a kudos for finishing the journey, and let's celebrate and let's have some positive celebrations this graduation season. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very good. I have one new business item, and, excuse me. This is related to the pending resignation of our city treasurer, Stephen Morris. And I'm going to, I received an email from Treasurer Morris last Wednesday, May the 8th. I'm going to read that email to you. It's very brief. "May the 8th, 2024. Dear Mayor Ali, due to personal and professional commitments, I regretfully must provide my intention to resign as city treasurer. The day-to-day functions of the office are capably handled by Deputy Treasurer Kayla Casey and the three other dedicated and conscientious city employees. The office serves as the forward face of City Hall for thousands of citizen interactions annually, and they do an incredibly fine job in that regard. My understanding is that you will appoint a successor to complete the remainder of the term. I commit to assisting in a smooth transition. We can discuss the specifics of this, but am willing to make the resignation effective upon a ratification of a successor or in the manner in which will cause the least disruption to the citizens, the staff, and the operations of the office. After you have had an opportunity to consider my notice, please let me know how you wish to proceed. I love the city of Peoria and have enjoyed serving in this capacity. Thank you respectfully, submitted Stephen Morris." And I want to point out that Deputy Treasurer Kayla Casey does not live in the city of Peoria. She lives outside the city and therefore would not be eligible to serve on an interim capacity. I did ask that question. So after I received that email, I did forward it to Corporation Counsel Hayes, and I asked for the guidance on filling the vacancy, and I'm going to read his brief response as well. "The vacancy in the office of treasurer is filled by appointment by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. There are no direct provisions on how interest in the position may be solicited, and you have discretion to appoint any resident of the city who has been a resident for at least one year and is statutorily eligible for office. A person is not eligible to take the oath of office for a municipal office if that person is at the time required for taking the oath of, excuse me, if the person is at the time required for taking the oath of office in arrears in the payment of a tax or other indebtedness due to the municipality, or has been convicted in any court located in the United States of any infamous crime, bribery, perjury, or other felony unless such person is again restored to his or her rights of citizenship that may have been forfeited under Illinois law as a result of conviction, which includes eligibility to hold elected municipal office by the terms of a pardon for the offense, has received a restoration of rights by the governor or otherwise according to law. Anytime after a judgment of conviction is rendered, a person convicted of an infamous crime, bribery, perjury, or other felony may petition the governor for a restoration of rights." And then he cited 65ILCS5/3.1-20-5. It's from Chapter 24, Paragraph 3, 1-20-5 in regard to the city clerk and treasurer. "The city clerk and the city treasurer shall be elected at the same time that the mayor is elected, except in the case of an election to fill a mayoral vacancy and except in the case of a city having 10,000 or fewer inhabitants, in which by ordinance the position or city treasurer is an appointed position. If a vacancy occurs in the office of city clerk or city treasurer, it should be filled by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. The person so appointed shall hold the office for the unexpired term of the officer elected." Sorry to read all that, but I wanted you to hear all the details, and I will forward both emails to the council. I am interested in appointing a qualified individual who will serve as a placeholder until someone is elected to the position next year. What do I mean by that? When I say placeholder, this would be an individual that is not interested in running for the office. I would prefer not to provide any unfair advantage by doing so. So it's my intention to come back with you with a process for soliciting potential candidates to be considered for my appointment, and then I want it to be a very open and transparent process. So any comments or feedback that you have for me, please make that known, but I'll forward both of these emails to you and come back with more information. Okay? Madam Clerk?
We are now at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and the town board. We have received six comment cards.
Okay. There they are. Okay, I have six cards, and Joyce Blumenschein.
Mayor Ali and counsel, thank you and good evening. Just a quick comment to follow up on the Distillery TIF, which was in the consent agenda tonight and did not have any comments. For those that were not at the meeting previously or maybe did not have time to read through all your minutes, I just want to remind folks that at the previous meeting, there were four public comments at the end of the meeting about concerns about the Distillery TIF, and that was from Doris Coaster, member of Southside Community United for Change, Wirth Mohammed, an activist for young people, Joyce Herrent with Citizens in Illinois here, and myself. And just to reiterate, the decision about a CO2 pipeline and the safety of the residents of 61605 now rests on you council members. That is your prerogative. The TIF gives you that power to yea or nay on projects. And the risks of CO2 pipelines and the fact that they could cause, if there's a leak or accident, a mass casualty event, is very real. So I will not take more of your time, but I just urge you all, please, to remember as this goes forward, there's every expectation that Distillery TIF could enable Biourja to make an application, and if they do that, I hope you all will consider, and I hope all the minority members of this council will consider, that the safety and lives in case there's an incident and accidents do happen will be on your shoulders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is- Next is Tara Wood.
Thank you for the opportunity to address all of you. My name is Tara Wood, and I reside in District 5. This message serves to acknowledge that tomorrow, May 15th, is the 76th anniversary of the Palestinian Nakba. In 1948, 15,000 Palestinians were killed, and 750,000 were violently removed by settler militias that would later became, that would later become, the state of Israel's armed forces. This catastrophic series of pogroms and mass killings created the Palestinian diaspora and made possible the creation of the State of Israel by the British Empire and other European governments. May 15th marks a tragic day of mourning and loss for the Palestinian community, the beginning of an era of dispossession and marginalization. The violence of the Nakba reverberates now. We are in the midst of a genocide funded by the American tax dollars. The Nakba in 1948 is ongoing. It never really ended, and today, now, we are responsible for it. Seventy-six years was yesterday, but it is not too late for justice. Do what you can before it is. Their blood is on our hands. Thank you.
Next, we have Hassan Naru. Naru?
Thank you.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Naru.
Naru, okay, thank you.
I was very encouraged by the comments in the session earlier, especially by Councilman Dennis about scrutinizing the budget. I was still confused about if we have $186 million in our reserve, and it's earning us only $4 million, whereas the mortgage nowadays goes for 7%. I would assume that we would get at least $12 million, but regardless, I'm very encouraged by this council's approach towards finances, and hopefully it can only get better. Speaking about finances and going off what Tara said, I find it hard to believe that we still give, as a country, so much money to the state of Israel. Almost 76 years ago, a small minority was given the majority of the land by the UN in an area where multiple peoples had legitimate claims. This minority then proceeded to brutally attack the people beyond the borders given to it, and in the process displaced hundreds of thousands of people without giving them ever a right to return. This was all done under a racist guise of preserving the majority that this minority had obtained through forceful displacement. The events I have described are called the Nakba. Seventy-six brutal years, and we're still living in the aftermath of those events. This is an ongoing slaughter, almost eight months in the current version of the current series of this event. The US continues to fund an apartheid state, an internationally recognized apartheid state, who has, which has a GDP per capita higher than that of France, and a tech sector that rivals Silicon Valley, free healthcare. Yet we give them money while not having enough money for our own needy folks. While we scrutinize our own budgets to talk about how grocery taxes are being spent, I think more attention should be given to how our taxes are spent abroad. Our taxes, if used internally, would have given the state, city of Peoria, millions of dollars, and the state of Illinois, in the tune of billions of dollars. The most recent funding for Israel was around $26 billion. Most of that funding went towards weapons. The right to self-defense does not mean you get to indiscriminately kill people. Young members of our society, the most hopeful, most bear at our universities, are arrested by the thousands, by police forces, and thrown, assaulted, they're thrown into prisons. Their crime is that they took the moral position of speaking out against the ongoing events. Their protests are focused on Israel and the human tragedy, yet they are accused of being anti-Jewish, even though many of them are Jewish. The massive events to obfuscate and distort, their message is disheartening. Twelve universities and many hospitals have been destroyed in Gaza. Yet the universities in the US have made no comments about the ongoing events, specifically speaking out the targeting of universities and healthcare centers. The steadfastness of our students gives me hope, though. Many cities across the country have passed ceasefire resolutions. Even in Illinois, the city of Urbana did. Contrary to what people may have you believe, there were no battles on the street. The city of Urbana doesn't have a spike in crime. People don't hate each other. But the council's conscience is clear.
Okay. I'm sorry, your time's up.
State leadership. Thank you.
Next is Adam Kotum.
Hello, City Council, Madam Mayor, City Manager. I'm Adam Kotum. I've come, many of you guys know me. I mean, we're here, we're fighting, and we're going to continue, and we're going to keep coming, and we're going to keep talking, we're going to keep calling. I mean, many, many, many human rights issues have happened in the past, like Vietnam, Iraq, and now it's Palestine. And there's always a good side and a bad side, and it's going to be in the history books one day. And we never know what's going to happen, even here in the city of Peoria. We can make a difference, believe it or not, and, I mean, like Tara and Hassan said, our taxpayer money is paying for everything that's going on. Every, I mean, I'm 15 years old. I work at an ice cream shop, Cold Stone. Any of you guys are welcome. I'll give you a free ice cream. And I look at the taxes that get cut out from my paycheck. I went and researched into it, and at least $2 from every single one of my paychecks goes to a foreign government. And in the recent bill that just got passed, the Natural Supplement Bill, some of it did go to Israel. And for an ice cream worker's money to go to a completely different country, why can't it come back to me, or come back to the city, or come back to something that's going to actually benefit us? I mean, I'm just speaking from the heart, and I'm trying to be as honest and as clear as possible. I know many of you guys are sick of us coming, are sick of hearing our voices, are sick of seeing our faces, but we aren't going to stop. And I respect every single person in this council and Madam Mayor, and basically, we're just going to keep going, and we're going to try our best to continue fighting. No matter who pushes us down and who pushes us up, we're still here, and if you guys are going to support, we thank you, and we will help you guys in the future. Because we are getting calls every single day from Peoria residents asking, "How can we help? How can we contribute with what's going on?" And these are new people every day, especially because what's going on in the encampments, many people are starting to wake up. And, I mean, for, I have, my number is all over the Peoria for Palestine website. I get calls every day from people asking, "What can we do?" And we're telling them to save it until the elections, until the elections come for anything, council, state senator, congressman, presidency, they're saving it. And our organization has grown immensely throughout the state of Illinois and throughout the United States of America. So I just want to tell all of you that, I mean, it's, it's terrible. I mean, nine months of this going on, and we don't know what to do anymore, but to come to our local politicians and tell them that our money from Peoria is going to this foreign government that is killing my people. And if me, as a Palestinian, won't, you know, change anyone's mind, then at least me, as an American, you know, coming to you all and telling you all from the heart. Thank you.
Next, we have Tiffany Yvonne Williams.
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. I am a resident on the north side of Peoria. I'm a mother of 10. And recently, I acquired a property at 1212 Monroe Street. And I was told by the judge that I would have 30 days to fix up what needed to be fixed, and all of it, majority of it is done that needed to be done. And the city is still fighting me to demo it. I am asking for assistance. I don't know how this works. I don't know how any of it works. But that home, I have 10 children, five grandchildren. That home is for my children, and if I, I feel like if I'm doing something to better the community, why is the city fighting me so hard for it? I've done what they've asked me to do. I've done what the judge asked me to do, and I am being harassed. I need assistance from someone, somewhere, to assist me. That house is historical. It was built in 1886. One of the first doctors of Peoria owned that home. I need some assistance from someone, somewhere. I can only do so much, but I will not give up. I will not back down, and I will not hide. I am a mother, and I am doing something that people are afraid to do. This is for my, not just for me, it's for my community. And me rebuilding a home that was forgotten about, I should have some type of acknowledgement for that, but I'm being fought against. I will not, I will not give up. I will not stop, and if I have to challenge whoever, I will challenge, because I am doing something that so many of my neighbors won't even do. I have served, the last mayor, I served him. I cooked for him. I did. I have served, I filled Morton Square Park with a community full of homeless people on my own, on my own, by myself, over 500 homeless people by myself. When I was on the verge of being homeless, I am asking you, Mayor, I'm asking you city council members to look into this, because I am, I'm on edge with it, because I haven't done anything wrong. I'm not a criminal. I make sure the elders in my community are okay. I, I need help, and I'm asking you guys to assist me in any way you know how. I have reached out to a couple of people, and I know some people. I need assistance, because that home is for my children. That home is a legacy for my children. And I'm asking you guys to look into this and, and open up your hearts and think as parents, not just council members, because you all are human, to, to look at this and see, why am I being pushed so hard to get that home? They want the home, and I need help. Thank you.
Next, we have Wesley Henry.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Wesley Henry. My wife and I, our family moved here approximately four years ago with the purpose of trying to do something to improve the community. The first thing we did, from Pastor Howard, we purchased the property in Wisconsin and Nebraska. And so far, between purchasing that property and spending the money to repair it, so we can get it, Jeff Smith has already did the plans and the architectural work to put in five different businesses there. I've spent almost $100,000 out of pocket to get it fixed up. I think my wife just spoke to Tim Regenbacher about what we have done. He did not even know that. So what I do need is some type of acknowledgement in what we're trying to do to better the community. That's taxed off revenues, that you guys, that's 20 to 25 jobs out of our own pocket. Now, my purpose here is the ordinance that we talked about in reference to my own property that I've purchased, a house right in the community. I've spent thousands and thousands of dollars fixing it up. There was prostitution in our street that is actually no more. My wife and I have actually gone out there and told those prostitutes to get them off. In addition to that, there's a small issue with a fence that's about maybe two or three inches higher than normal. There's not one fence in our community that's 36 inches, according to the ordinance, not one. And I feel I'm being targeted, and I've spent over another $15,000 getting those fences done. And every time I was told to do something, I did it in compliance, and I'm still having pushback. I've had pictures and evidence of every single fence, well, most of the fence in my community, that is not even 36 inches high. These are new as well as old. Now, in reference to this, I don't think we're all equal. We're all created equally, but it's the law that makes us equal, and more so the enforcement and application of the law. And in this case, I don't think it's been applied properly. And all I'd like to have is a conversation with those in my district, as well as yourself, to see what we can do to bring a resolution so we can have this and go forward. Because right now, my wife don't want to be here. Matter of fact, she said, "You know what? We just purchased a house in Georgia," and she's ready to go. So we'd like to do more and spend our money to be in this community, but we'd like to have a little bit of, of assistance so we can do what we can to stay here. Thank you very much, and that's all I wanted to say.
You're welcome.
Okay? I hope we can come to some resolution, Mr. Regenbacher. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, we are now at executive session.
I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C5 to discuss the purchase of real property for the use of the public body, including discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C21 for approval by the body of closed session minutes. Can I get a motion moved by Councilmember Gordon Young, seconded by Councilmember Allen? Please cast your ballots to adjourn in the closed session. Motion passes. Thank you for your service.